What's up, Arnie? Doing well? You'll find out here in a few minutes. You'll find out when I vote. That's what I've told everyone. No one knows how I'm gonna vote. Read my video afterwards. Hey, what do you do after every meeting? I do a councilman update. I do a councilman update after every single meeting. I post the agenda and my thoughts about it before I vote, too. I've been on the phone with more attorneys in the past 48 hours than you can believe. You'll find out.
Folks, I want to welcome you to the St. Charles County Council meeting of Monday, June the 24th. We will begin our meeting with an invocation from Pastor Steve Parks of Bible Baptist Church in St. Charles, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Dave Hammond. Please stand.
Shall we bow in prayer? Our Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening as a needy people. We do not come with a demanding spirit but a needy heart needing your wisdom. In this place, we invite your presence to this meeting this evening. Please be with these men and ladies who conduct this meeting tonight. Guide them to make wise decisions for the sake of the families who live in this county. Also, for those who will speak from the floor, that their comments will provide additional light to the decisions to be made. And, Father, we pray as we ask for your wisdom. We also ask for discernment to have foresight to the impact of the decisions that are made. We thank you for the men and ladies that serve on the council. Father, in a position of trust, but we know that with that trust also comes responsibility to their community. We pray that you'll bless their minds and their hearts as they make decisions tonight. We pray these things in Christ's name and for his sake. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Eland.
Here.
Councilmember Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Schneider.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
We will begin tonight's meeting with a public hearing on highway traffic regulation recommendations. Is there anyone here to speak on traffic regulation recommendations?
Ipswich Lane, no parking sign. Clara, no.
Yes.
Come on, go up, ma'am.
I'm speaking this evening as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Homeowners Association of Stonebridge Manor. Last fall, prior to our annual meeting, I received a number of complaints from residents about the narrowing of the situation on the street in question, which is between Windchime and Crystal Cove, when vehicles are parked on both sides of the street. There was quite a bit of discussion during the meeting. There were numerous stories of near accidents and one story of an accident that had been involved, one of the residents that had been involved in an accident because of the narrowing when the, both sides of the streets are filled. So then, I spoke with Rod Sage, PE and PTO TE Traffic Engineer for the county, who showed me, sent me an aerial view proving where the street nearly, narrowly becomes more narrow during that section. And also, it's quite clear that when cars are parked on both sides, it's impossible to have two-way navigation, and we also question whether a fire truck can get through during an emergency. And so, for not only the safety of the vehicles, but also the safety of the young children in our community, and again, on behalf of the 62% of the members in our community who signed in favor of the petition, I am requesting that you grant our request. And further evidence of that, I'd like the members of Stonebridge that are here this evening and are in favor, if they could raise their hand to show you how many of us are here tonight in favor of this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Larry Schottenberg.
I think he covered my turn.
Okay.
William Gettemeyer.
Yeah, I'm William. I live on Windchime, so I'm a little bit, you have to come down Ipswich to make a right. So, in order for us to come down our street, if there's cars on both sides, I own a truck. It's not a big truck, just a 1500. You barely got inches to get through if there's cars on both sides. My neighbor, which he declined to talk, also, he has to put his mirrors in in order to go down the street, which is unfortunate because you'll take your mirror off because there's stuff on both sides. Part of the problem, I think, is, and I don't favor, I don't fault the homeowners, but two of the homeowners both have, they don't use their garages for cars. They got it set up for, you know, whatever entertainment. So, all their cars have to be parked out, which means if you have people over, there's no place for them to park but on the street across. And then, one of the neighbors also has a trailer that he has once in a while, probably three days a week, maybe two days a week, which is a commercial trailer which sticks out, so it makes it even further if you've got a car there trying to drive by. So, it makes it almost impossible to drive through. So, I don't know what the dimension of the street is width-wise, but I'm wondering if you take the width of the street, take the average-sized car, the average-sized truck, and what a fire truck width would be if there's any space for a fire truck to come down. And I think part of it, I didn't see the other, some of the, some of the residents also have pull behind, like a campers, the big ones. I don't know, they're not here, so I don't know if they have trouble to pull out or come in with it, but they're not here to speak, but that's a kind of a concern, too, also. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
James Guffey.
Thanks for a chance to speak. I want to reiterate what's been said already. I'm interior, so when you get past this spot and you turn, you're, you get to my house. In addition to what the others have said, my concern is, it's late at night, there's some emergency of some sort. Somebody's house is on fire, somebody's got a heart attack, and so, to me, that, that safety issue alone justifies making sure that, that there's access for vehicles that need to come, in addition to the, obviously, the traffic that other people have been talking about, so, you know, I think that, that's a primary issue to me. I hope my house doesn't start on fire, but if it does, I'd really like the fire department to be able to get there.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, the last speaker for public hearings is Arnie Dinoff.
I think there's somebody to raise their hand.
Can I ask him to speak as well?
Yes.
I didn't realize I had to sign up, my fellow pressure.
Come on up, sir. Mr. Dinoff, I think we're gonna allow this gentleman to speak first, and then we'll get to you.
Thank you for having this meeting. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I live in Stonebridge Manor as well, at 3514 Ipswich. I live on the question where they want to put the no parking signs. I am also a former HOA member of the subdivision, okay? So, when the subdivision was built, there's the plot plan. The county signed off on the street. It's 26 feet wide, okay? My neighbors are correct. The street does narrow down as it comes into our subdivision. But if you go out the first street and make a right, it's 33 feet that way, and if you cross over Ipswich coming to the north, it's 26 feet as well.
St. Albans.
St. Albans. If you, if you continue through any neighborhood in our neighborhood, it's the exact same way, okay? It's been that way for 26 years, right? What we are talking here is about 5% of the time, okay? And here's what I know for certain, okay? If there was a problem with fire engines, police trucks, ambulance getting through, we wouldn't be having this meeting. It would already have been addressed by the fire chief, right? And just so we know, right here, since I've lived at the, in the subdivision, just a few that I can recount. 3621 Windchime, multiple fire engines and ambulance, and I believe the person has passed away, okay? 3617 Windchime, multiple fire engines and ambulance, police, person, I believe, has passed away. 3510 Ipswich, my neighbor next door had a baby that had an issue. No problem getting through, right? Number three, Crystal Cove Court, one of the people in the neighborhood that's tied to the board, right? No problem getting through to check at her dad, right? 3584 Windchime Court, no problem getting through, right? So, just to reiterate, if the fire chief in any community thought there was a problem, right, we would not be here having this meeting.
And throughout St. Charles Hills, it's 26 feet within. We've driven through there, there are cars parked on both sides everywhere. My thing is, is that people speed up and down. That's more of the problem. And I've talked to police officers who've come into the neighborhood, and I've said, "Sir, if you can get on Ipswich, I'm telling you, you would pull over so many people because the speed limit's 25, but people do more like 45 on a, and they fly up and down our street." We sit outside, we're one of the homeowners.
I have a radar gun. I radar them for fun.
That we don't park in our garage. Well, I have pictures of my vehicles in my garage last night. Do we have a garage that we sit in, that we made nice so that we can hang out in? Yes, but we also park our vehicles in it. So, we, we're five houses. If it's such a terrible thing, when we have visitors come over, where are those visitors gonna go park? If we have some electrician come to work in our house, where's he gonna park? If we have, you know, the front of our house filled up, where are they gonna park? We're gonna go park in front of another neighbor's house, and then those neighbors are gonna get mad that people are parking in front of their houses, because we've already had this instant, we already had this happen in our neighborhood when it was the Fourth of July, we moved my husband's truck over in front of a neighbor's house so we could clean up the street really nice because we, there were fireworks that were going off. And the lady who lived there, the, the truck was there for a matter of a couple hours, maybe not even two hours. She had her daughter get her car and go pull it in front of our house.
While I was trying to clean the street.
Yeah, and so, I can just see it being a, more of a feud in this neighborhood, and it's like, why? We live there. We live there. We see this 24/7. You know, I work from home two days a week. My husband works from home every day. We're there, we see what goes on all day long, and we have cameras in the front of our house that have the last month worth of footage from this side of our neighbors over here to this side of our neighbors that show you the street, that I would be happy to show any of you, as much footage as you need to see, to show you that this is not an issue. You know, we have maybe one party a year.
We have, we have actually two parties a year. We have a Fourth of July party where nobody parks on the street because we're shooting fireworks off, and we have another party in the fall where we have a bonfire in our backyard, right? And our neighbors are invited that want to come, okay? What I want to leave you with is just a couple of things. Every street in our subdivision is 26 feet wide. So, when you displace five people's cars, right, homes, cars that are there to visit, okay, they're gonna go into other people's parts of the neighborhood. And I can tell you, I don't have the most parties by, by far, right? But I deal with what my neighbors do because we're neighborly, right? And the trailer they talked about is a utility trailer. It's not a commercial trailer, okay? It's a utility trailer, and countless numbers of my neighbors have used my trailer with me and my truck to go get.
Appliances.
To go get appliances at Lowe's or whatever, right?
And it's not even there all the time.
Keep in mind, just keep in mind.
And his vehicle is not a commercial vehicle, it's a 1,500-gram truck.
Keep in mind, we wouldn't be here if the police, the fire ambulance, and/or a fire chief thought it was a problem.
And if it's good for one street, it should be good for all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dinoff, will you?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, county public advocate. First of all, I have to go on the record and make it a part of the record that Chapter 610, in my opinion, is being violated. Chapter 610.022 requires this governing body in the administration to accommodate the anticipated public in a, a space that's safe and that's free from not having people to stand, not being at high temperatures where everybody is now sweating. And so, you knew this last week, that there were a lot of people who were attending, and somebody negated to move this to either the family arena or a larger facility, and I think that we need to be cognizant of that, and so, I want to go on the record stating that this public hearing should be continued until July for people who cannot even have access through a blocked entrance to the county council chambers and the accommodations disenfranchising of our 433 county citizens.
Mr. Dinoff, I respect your opinion now. We're, we're speaking on a public issue of the traffic.
I know, traffic, but I just want to make, make it an issue of the, the problem, the violation of Chapter 610. The capacity is standing of more than 100 residents around the room, and climate control and accessibility is being denied. But when it comes to the, what we're asking for on Tanglewood Drive, Buggy Whip Drive, Wellsmont Drive, and the no parking sign installation on Idwick Lane, which is just outside of the city of St. Charles and unincorporated county, this has a huge impact on people's lives, and we have to look at the best outcome for the, all parties involved. I'd like to see more public outreach. We heard the county engineer a couple months ago who changed the ordinance and changed the process of the public hearings, and I think that we need to have a better outreach. We need to make sure and inform, sending a letter to subdivision trustees and neighborhood associations, notifying them of these meetings, telling them of the plans, and getting them as part of this process, because this is the, the most impact of local government on local neighborhoods and subdivisions. And again, I ask that we make a better public outreach, and I also ask that you keep this public hearing open until July. I think there needs to be more thought process, more debate, more discussion. We haven't heard the outcome. A small memo was written by the county engineer, but I think that the county engineer and his staff should be called up to the podium, and I think there needs to be some questions and answers answered before you approve this, and so, those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right.
That was the final speaker for public hearing.
So, that closes public hearing on the traffic regulation recommendations. Our next topic is public comments, and just a reminder, we will limit the public comments to three minutes. Normally, we would go, you know, for and against on certain subjects, and normally, we would limit them to three speakers for, three speakers against, as we did two weeks ago. Because of the amount of interest in this particular subject, we will go ahead and allow approximately 10 or 11 speakers on, on this particular issue. We will start out.
Bill number 5300, William Carrier.
And just to clarify, because Mr. Carrier represents a large number of people here, we, the council agreed to give him five minutes rather than the allotted three minutes, so.
Thank you, council. Again, William Carrier, representing Citizens for Smart Growth in St. Charles County LLC. Tonight, council, we are at a critical milestone that will define the nature of our rural community along Highway DD for the next 75 years. The Highlands is most favorably described as not as bad as last year's Tall Tree Farm disaster. It is inconsistent with master plan and current land use and has long-term adverse impacts on our community. Your rezoning decision comes down to choosing between the needs of the people versus the needs of profit-driven special interests. St. Charles County citizens expect council members to be leaders. Per Missouri Ethics Commission Campaign Finance Report, Councilman Eland leads the council in accepting donations from development-related entities at a dollar amount, nearly five times that of the next highest council member. Who amongst you wants to follow his lead? Lombardo's full assault on our rural residential community is shown here. Executive Elman wants the Highway DD corridor to be the next obtrusive mix of dense housing and redundant commercial development like O'Fallon's Wing Haven corridor. His planning and zoning director misled the council on 10 June when he stated the Highlands development isn't required to meet the master plan's rural residential three-acre lot minimum since it was a cluster home development, which it is not and it does not meet the requirements for. County officials must protect St. Charles County from the aggressive expansion of local municipalities. However, as the county has declined to take direct action, it falls upon us to do so. Our legal counsel here tonight recently presented the strength of our planned annexation to the St. Charles County Councilor. While Mr. Sullivan believes our case is hypothetical, we have validated evidence that the Tall Tree Farm property does not meet the statutory requirements for contiguity and compactness. We have high confidence in defeating O'Fallon's annexation. Our supporters want to pursue litigation even if its failure raises the risk of annexation expanding further south. Hopefully, I can. The community members here are the true voice of St. Charles County, actually, the spirit of St. Charles County. We recognize this area will be developed, but it must be consistent with the existing rural density of the neighborhoods and small farms that comprise our community. Lombardo knows how to build a high-end, three-acre lot development as shown here. They've done it before in, say, Charles County. However, in this case, they choose to place profits before people and force a density six times that of the surrounding community. Council members Swanson, Hollander, Hammond, and Schneider, your denial of Lombardo's rezoning and dense development proposal, combined with our defeat of O'Fallon's annexation attempt, enables the 2030 master plan update to correctly define the Highway DD corridor south of Summers Road as a uniform rural residential zone, thus preserving rural St. Charles County for future generations. To do so is to act justly and responsibly to the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Drew Weber. Drew Weber.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Drew Weber.
I'd like to make a point of order here. You got people out in the hallway, they can't see the screen. I do believe this violates the Missouri Open Meetings Law. Technically, we should not be able to continue if people can't participate in the public hearing. So, that's the law, Roy, I believe. If they're not able to attend the meeting, we're not able to continue. That's the Missouri state law on, on open meetings law.
I'm, I'm afraid, what is the question that you're asking me, Councilmember Brazel?
The question is, if, if these folks are outside and in the hallway, they cannot fill out a speaker card, they can't get through the door, they can't see the information be provided on the screen, that means they're not participating in the meeting, and that violates the Missouri Open Meetings Law.
I believe you're misstating the sunshine law, council member.
It was requested to be at the family arena, and these folks cannot participate. How is that a public hearing?
I, I have no idea when you say that somebody requested a meeting be held in the family arena, Mr. Brazel.
Yes.
How many people are outside?
About 20.
How many?
No, I never heard of anything saying to change location. Did you send anything to Terry?
There's no room. There's no room.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Have some people stand over here.
Those, those folks that are standing, I believe there's room over here. I think we can, we can, if we have any staff members. All right. Sure, certainly, certainly.
Rory said that's not true.
Okay. We, we know there's some people in the hall. We know there's a great deal of interest in this particular subject, all right? If for some reason, all right, we say, "Okay, we're not gonna have this tonight," we're gonna turn around and we could find another venue, we can do, the, the point of the matter is, this, this decision that needs to be made, or is gonna be made, is going to be made either tonight, some other time, whatever, but the point is, we're here now, we have people that are, we are allowing as many speakers, and again, our rules state that normally we allow three speakers for, three speakers against. Tonight, we've allowed, I think we got a dozen speakers that are opposed to this, that we are going to allow to speak, that's a, that's, that's a half an hour. So, I would say that my, my decision is that we do have people that are able to participate. So I would say that my decision is that we do have people that are able to participate because we're allowing 12 speakers. So, as we will, we will continue now. I believe Mr. Weber is up, and then Lori will continue to call speakers.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting because I think it violates public meetings laws. I don't get a second, but I'm just saying, just for the record.
Counselor Chair.
Yes.
Excuse me. The sunshine law at section 610020.2 states in relevant part, "Each meeting shall be held at a place reasonably accessible to the public and of sufficient size to accommodate the anticipated attendance by members of the public and at a time reasonably convenient to the public unless for good cause such place or time is impossible or impractical. Every reasonable effort shall be made to grant special access to the meeting to handicapped or disabled individuals." The sunshine law does not state... The sunshine law does not state, sir...
Why don't we just go ahead and table the bill that all these people are here for and arrange for a meeting at another location?
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay.
Discussion.
Discussion?
Oh, no, I was...
Okay, so we have a motion to table this particular issue and put it off for two weeks and have it at a different venue, okay? All those that are in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
No.
Let's go roll call.
Counselmember Swanson?
Nay.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
No.
Councilman Hollander?
No.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
No.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
It fails four to three, so we're going to continue this meeting, and we are going to make the best of the situation that we have, starting with Mr. ... Mr. Weber.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Drew Weber with Hamilton Weber. I want to take my time this evening just to provide a brief recap of the facts behind this development. This, what you're seeing up here on the screen, this is the colorized site plan of the property. It should be familiar to you by this point. Highway DD, which is on the west side of the property, is to the north. I just want to remind everyone that, excuse me, not to the north, to the top. Highway DD, west of the property, to the top of the screen. I want to remind the council that we have designed this portion of the project to be a transition, right? So the lots along Highway DD and the southern part of the property are the larger lots. And then on the interior is where the smaller lots are. And then, as you look on the northern part of the property, that's where the common ground is. So you have a transition from the interior to all the exterior parts of the property that are adjacent to any other private development. Those are all larger lots or common ground adjacent to all private development. The Highlands to Bush Wildlife is about 137 acres and 120 lots. That's 0.88 lots per acre or 1.14 acres per lot. There is almost 63 acres of common ground, so that's almost half this whole project is common ground. And the majority of that common ground is actually trees, existing trees. And you've seen this before, but on this plan, the green area is the tree coverage that will remain, and then the pink area is the tree coverage that will be removed. The county's tree preservation requirement is 25% of existing trees, so there's 67.8 acres of existing trees. The county would require that we preserve 16.9. We're only removing 15, so that means we are retaining 77.9%. So 52.8 acres of trees on 136.92 acre parcel. And again, a lot of that is common ground, almost 63 acres of common ground on this This project is unique compared to almost every other project I've done in that there's been far more input from the public, from other stakeholders, and that input translated into actual design plans at almost any other project. I mean, here, we've gone over a lot of this, I won't reiterate all of it, but all the utility districts, the Department of Conservation, the Astronomical Society of Eastern Missouri. We have met with all of these groups to try and bring the best project we can forward. We believe this is a good compromise project. I know not everyone agrees, but we ask that you approve tonight this project. Thank you.
Carol Bentley?
I'd like to start with a quote from Councilman Mike Elam. This is on the St. Charles County website under Councilmember Bios. Elam is asked, "What is the biggest challenge for our county?" And his answer, and I quote, "Is to continue to grow in a manageable manner that preserves the character of our county." Your word, sir. This is not manageable growth, this is reckless growth, and it does not preserve the character of this part of the county. The master plan for this area calls for three acres. You can't just pull the rug out from under us. All of us have invested our life into this area. We bought land because of its rural ambiance. It's wrong. These roads are already deadly. There's memorials all over the place on D and DD. Lombardo's proposed development is actually closer to D than it is to Highway 40. So people who are coming from Chesterfield or West County, they're going to figure out that they can get off at Highway 94 and go drive through Bush Wildlife, which is already a mess. There's all kinds of accidents on there all the time. I've seen three personally, myself. My husband, last meeting, mentioned to you that he got hit head-on on Highway D near Bush Wildlife, Lake 16, by a high school schooler who was trying to pass two cars at the same time on a blind hill. Now you want to add hundreds and hundreds of more cars and more kids driving from that high school. And let's not even get to the winery traffic that is on Highway D and DD all the time. Those people don't know our roads, and they're drunk. You're taking our lives into your hands. All of us are asking this question, believe me, we are. What is your personal motivation for approving this rezoning? We now know from citizens of Smart Growth that Elam received money from developers. This is an absolute conflict of interest, at the very least, and could be construed as outright bribery or influence peddling, and frankly, a slap in the face to the people he serves. The developer did not vote you into office, the people did. Your developer friend gets one vote, and that's if he even lives in your district. And to the other council members, what about you? What is your personal motivation?
Ma'am.
By voting yes for rezoning, it speaks volumes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Enough of your delight tactics. You need to vote more on this tonight and be done with it.
Ma'am, your three minutes is up.
And you need to listen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Members of the council, for the record, my name's Mike Faulkner. I'm Vice President of Sterling Engineering Company, offices 5055 New Baumgartner, St. Louis, 63129. What I wanted to do today is to address a couple of the concerns that the citizens had that we had heard in the previous meetings. And I want to, I've got a couple of slides, if I could pull those up.
There it is.
Okay.
No, I think that's Mr. Weber's.
Okay, one of the concerns that we heard was about pump stations, and that the pump stations were going to be real close to the residents and their homes. So what this slide shows is where a pump station would be located at and the distance to each of the homes along DD. So you can see, we're well over 1,900 feet to a home, to the pump station. We also showed where our future homes would be, and you can see to down below, we've got our closest home's going to be 1,100 foot, the other home's going to be 1,570 foot. So these, this pump station can be well far away from all the homes of the residents. The next slide, what I did is I pulled up Fox Haven subdivision. Fox Haven subdivision has two pump stations. Those two pump stations, you can see the one up to the left is 95 foot from a residence, and the one to the right down in the bottom areas, 40 foot. So that gives you an idea that they're both fairly close. The next thing we heard was the residents were talking about what we're going to see as we drive down DD. We're going to see homes. So this first slide is up at the very north end of the development, and you can see, and I know it's kind of hard because of all the folks there, but the little red dot all the way to the left, that's the car. And then there's another little red dot, that's a person walking on the trail. And you can see the detention basin, that cross-section cuts through there. And then the home is 700 foot away, but it's a densely vegetated, natural vegetated area.
Can you focus the other?
The next slide is moving on down in the subdivision to show some of the two-acre lots. And you can see, we're 320 foot to the back of the house, the little red car, and you can see the, I've got a guy out there mowing, but you can see that this, the residents are not really going to see it because they're going to be looking through a densely vegetated buffer that we have along there. And what I have shown there is a two-story home.
Thank you, sir.
Tim Pickering?
Mr. Pickering.
Members of the council, it's nice to see you again. I spoke two weeks ago. I really want to impress on you how important your decision is for the future of DDD. I live at 3948 Indian Ridge Lane, and Defiance is about four miles from this development. I have to transit this road on a daily basis. Currently, the road is occupied by between 40 and 60 quarry trucks going back and forth. We're talking about adding up to 400 vehicles to that traffic load. I am also concerned, as you can see are all the other citizens that are present, with the fact that we're talking about a dense development here, as the gentleman just referred. 0.88 is the aggregate density. The current community surrounding this development is 0.12 in density. Our expectations in moving to this area were based on the 2030 master plan. The 2030 master plan does not anticipate this development. Despite the fact that Property and Zoning spoke two weeks ago about cluster homes that could be, that doesn't fit within the character of this property. Some within the council may also believe that this would create an effective block against future annexations by O'Fallon. We have looked, and the citizens for Smart Growth have consulted competent counsel and very different viewpoints, and they have both independently concluded that so, and no annexation block can exist as a matter of law. In the three to five years until Lombardo turns the property over to the HOA, annexation can be voluntary and very easily done. The council itself has not conducted a financial impact on what this will do to the county and the county services. As a matter of course, we have found out that the council doesn't do a financial impact analysis. Frankly, as a businessperson, a retired one, I would never engage in the business of developing an area without, or permitting a development, without understanding the financial impact. That makes pure common sense. And as you have heard from other folks, 40 homes, high value, on three-acre lots with their own septic and private roads are the only ways that the county council can achieve a positive financial benefit. Because of the lack of road infrastructure that's adequate, overcrowded schools, a lift station, as the gentleman has stated, that's going to be a ways away, but still has its problem, the denigration of my and other people's property values, please listen to your constituents, who you're sworn to represent in our best interests, not your best interests. Please vote no on this proposed development tonight.
I'm Tom Reagan. I live in the Fox Haven subdivision. My first impression of Tall Trees was, who on the board led this developer on? This is a devastating and ridiculous idea for this area. It does not fit. And the developer at that time was tens of thousands of dollars deep into the project. A year later, different developer, same story. Again, the developer is tens of thousands of dollars deep into his pocket. Who keeps leading these developers on? Please tell us, you're not going to abuse the power entrusted to you to benefit the landowner and developer instead of listening to your constituents. Please pay attention to the St. Charles County 2030 master plan. It has a purpose. Do not toss it in the trash can and betray your constituents just to benefit a very wealthy individual with significantly higher land prices than it is actually worth. Rezoning Highway DD for three-acre lots is very close to what St. Charles County 2030 master plan suggests. High-density housing is exactly the opposite of the master plan suggestion. We voted you all in office to protect us from these harmful developments like this. Your job is to keep these developments from ruining and overcrowding this area. Planning and zoning commission, yes votes. You have betrayed all of your constituents by voting yes for the Highlands. It appears some members have chosen to represent the landowner and developer rather than their constituents. Apparently, the motivation is to benefit the landowner with significantly higher land prices at the expense of everyone and everything else in this area. Didn't see that coming from the planning and zoning in St. Charles County Council. I believe the landowner just bought a multimillion-dollar property on Highway Z, half-mile south of Highway N. Eastside, there are several hundred feet of wooden split-rail fence and a locked gate along Highway Z. I think that's a Dearburg's new property. Whatever honor and integrity the Planning and Zoning Commission for yes votes think they have, and they have much less now. St. Charles County, fastest-growing county in Missouri, O'Fallon. Fastest-growing city in Missouri, O'Fallon. One of 16 best places in Missouri for financial opportunity, not me, maybe Lombardo. O'Fallon just added 300 homes on Highway N.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Okay, so I'm thinking future after everybody has their ideas, does their development that's not going to happen and leaves us. So I'm thinking of a new real estate home for sale for the new subdivision that's not going to happen, how it would read. Come enjoy this beautiful countryside that we are going to destroy to build your house. See the plentiful wildlife trying to eat your flowers and on your yard that used to be theirs. Relax and sit in traffic because there is no roads to hold this expansion. Schools are plentiful, and your kids will just have to wait until that idea gets resolved and something happens for the schools to get bigger and to support all these kids and... that you all are wanting to come in with these subdivisions that is not profitable. There is nothing to do out here and no place to go, but hey, what a great place to live with this development that you think is going to happen. You know, why would any builder want to take their name and destroy it when such an idea is being opposed by so many of us that live out here, that have developed this property, have developed this country that we live in and are defending? It doesn't mean anything to anybody but us because here we are defending what we came out here to live for, to be in, and to relax and retire with. It seems nobody wants to listen to us. Nobody cares what our thoughts are. Nobody answers any of our questions. We just come up here, we talk, we get three minutes, we get no answers, we get no statements, nobody says anything to us. Everybody gets a year or so to discuss, oh, what are we going to do with the development on Double D for these people in Defiance? You guys get a year or more to discuss our future and our subdivision, and we get two weeks, if that, when we see a little public hearing sign that you can't even read on the side of the highway, then all of us have to get together, interrupt our lifestyle, get notes together, find out how to defend, load our magazines, come in here with words to defend ourselves and hopefully be heard at how stupid this is. This is stupid. Nothing makes sense about it except the money that's going to get taken over by the developer and whoever else is involved with things like that. But please take our words and hear what we're saying. This is bad, bad. Nobody lives out here. So when this all gets done and said, everybody's going to go to their house that they decided to live in, that they chose to live in, and then we're going to be stuck with all the construction, all the traffic, everything, all the cluster of what you all are thinking is a great idea for us. None of you are going to be left behind to feel what we're going to feel after everybody goes home and then things start happening. Please.
Helen.
Please take heed of what we're saying.
Helen Proctor Two. Helen Proctor Two.
Good evening again. My name is Helen Proctor Two. Again, in case you didn't know, I'm almost like from my aunt and uncle, so I have a lot invested in all of this. Couple things. Everybody says, oh, it's not going to bring that many kids, you know, and they're not going to need all those cars. Well, first of all, nothing is within walking distance out here. You have to have a car. So everybody that has kids is going to get a car because their kids want to get someplace when they're old enough to drive. So those book numbers and everything else don't mean a lot right here because you have to drive to get someplace. Also, last time, there were a lot of points or questions brought out. Thank you very much, Joe. I really appreciated your questions. But you cannot vote if you don't get answers to all those questions. How do you vote on something? Oh, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Let's just sort of vote on that. You have to get down to the answers to those questions before any one of you on this council can make that decision, a yes or a no. This is too important for that. And next, you have yet to answer my question. You say, oh, yes, the PWSD number two is going to plant plenty of water for this new subdivision and development, but that doesn't answer anything to any of us who have wells. What if our wells aren't deep enough anymore? I have a suggestion. Make them put money in an escrow in case our wells are no longer deep enough and make that money pay for us to dig deeper because I shouldn't have to pay for water to go deeper in case that goes. Is that my fault that they put in wells, you know, or not wells, but they all of a sudden drew more water out than what I can get to anymore? That should not fall on me. It should not fall on them. You have yet to address that, and that is critically important because for me to get to county water is way far away, and I've learned I have to pay and maintain all of that. Very unfair to me on a fixed income. Also, I, I want to respect each and every one of you. You've been elected to office to represent each and every one of us. I want to have that respect for you. Do you want to have that respect for us? I haven't seen that exactly yet, and I'm hoping that you do have that respect for us because we're here trying to show you how we feel, what we feel, why we feel. The only way to show that is in your vote. And lastly, they keep saying, oh, we're going to put the big lots on the side so you can't see it from the road. Who the heck cares? What's more important? What you're putting up against bush wildlife? What you're going to ruin is bush wildlife with these teeny-tiny postage stamp lots up against bush wildlife with no buffer? We asked for a buffer. They said no, and this is the best you're going to get. Well, who are they to tell us this is the best you're going to get? Is that how you operate? I don't think so. You have the power. They do not. Do you remember that? You are voting, not them. Thank you very much.
Jamie. Jamie Newsom.
I'm not going to take a lot of your time. I'm Jamie Newsom. I've lived in St. Charles City since 1961, and I'm here to support you all and only because we don't need any more trees cut down. We don't need any more subdivisions. We need to start thinking about our environment better. I've got a whole lot to say. I'm not going to bother. Just please don't vote yes for this.
He's good.
Good evening, council. My name is Eric Fields. I live at 11 Wild Turkey Run in O'Fallon. I was just going to come up here and again reiterate that every single speaker, short of people who are actually involved in this project, that has ever come up here to speak to you last year and this year included, minus the two gentlemen who were construction workers, has been opposed to this project. Granted, this is just the Highlands, the southern portion of this project, but we all are here know that this is not just one part. It's a two-part project that was originally one. So I was just going to come up and reiterate the fact that nobody, nobody has come to these meetings. Nobody's been to planning and zoning. Nobody's been to county council meetings in support of this. The people that live in the area, people that don't live in the area, nobody is for this. We don't need more subdivisions. What's it called? Harvest on N is approximately 900 homes gone to O'Fallon. The Post family across the street from Harvest is another 300 homes gone to O'Fallon. Summerlin is not completed. Caledonia is not completed. The new, I think it's still in the county subdivision directly across from Liberty High School, I think it's like 48 more homes. This area is being inundated with homes. It doesn't need more homes. That's for sure. None of the issues regarding infrastructure have been addressed. The traffic, we all know it's going to be a massive problem, and currently our solution is, well, eventually the state will get to it. That's not acceptable to anybody, obviously. I do recall from the traffic study that was done last year that it called for a minimum road width of 100 feet on Double D, which would have to be expanded, obviously, the entire length of Double D. If that's ever going to happen, who really knows? Also, while I've been in the back, I took a quick note of what the attorney for Lombardo presented up here. He stated that they've designed this portion of the project to be a transition in homes. This obviously presents the question, what's the other portion of the project? If this portion of the project is just this portion, you all cannot vote for this without knowing, well, what's the other portion? We've seen the photographs of the actual development that doesn't even actually include the entire parcel that's being developed. There's a large chunk off the northern end of the parcel that's not included. Nobody's asked why. Nobody's answered why this isn't included. What's the plan for that part of the parcel? What's the plan for the rest of the K-9 country parcels? What's the plan going to be tying this into Tall Trees? None of these questions have been asked. None of these questions have been answered. And for these reasons, I think that this council needs to step back and say, no, not at this time until we have more information and we know what the whole plan is. You guys need to take a bigger picture look instead of just this one development. Thank you.
Regarding Bill Number 5302, Septic Regulation, Tony Lovasco.
Lovasco.
Thank you, council. I am Tony Lovasco, State Representative for District 64. And as you might know, my district is northern O'Fallon and northwestern part of the county that contains quite a few homes with septic systems as well as wells. And this proposal, at least as written, unfortunately, kind of steps on folks' necks. I understand the willingness to want to get ahead of a problem of folks that are not maintaining their septic systems properly or allowing them to get into disrepair and affecting their neighbors negatively with various things coming up that we don't want to talk about here. That's fair. However, by making it a requirement that anyone who sells their property or in fact transfers their property get a third-party inspection performed before that transfer can commence, that goes too far. For starters, if we are going to start requiring inspections of any kind, that ought to be the county doing that, not some random third-party entity that can charge god knows what and hold up your sale until you meet with their schedule. At the very least, I think the county ought to step up and perform that role themselves. But furthermore, I think the entire concept is completely out of left field. We don't require inspections for other types of property transfers. I can have knob and tube wiring in my home, and it can be incredibly dangerous, and I could sell my house to someone else, and no one's the wiser if the buyer chooses not to have an inspection, which ultimately is what this is about. The buyer should be the one deciding whether or not they wish to have that inspection. The government should not be imposing that upon the sellers. Ultimately, this is a private transaction that we are considering stepping in front of for no gain other than to hopefully perhaps encourage folks to bring things up to code, which quite frankly, if we had evidence that they weren't doing anyway, the county's already empowered to issue citations. So I would encourage this body to take a good look at this ordinance, perhaps make some modifications. There's plenty of things within the county's current ordinances regarding septic and well systems that needs to be updated. One of the things I've been working on at the state level deals with the fact that the county, as well as other parts of the state, has a requirement that if you're within 200 feet of city water or municipal water or sewer systems, I'm sorry, you are required to connect. And the county's ordinance is a little bit better than most in the sense that, well, you can't replace your system, you can only repair it, whereas many municipalities throughout the state actually require you to hook up as soon as that connection comes within a certain distance of your home. That's incredibly expensive, and as people have mentioned today, you as the property owner would bear that cost. Anytime we are messing with people's ability to transfer their property ownership or use their home as they see fit, I think we need to be very, very careful. So I would urge the council to take another look. And I think I have 19 seconds left, and I'm not going to use them. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Rose Zuck. Lake St. Louis Boulevard Extension.
They always have problems with us.
It'll come.
There we go.
There you go.
And I know I've talked about this before. My name's Rose Zuck, and I am against the Lake St. Louis Boulevard Extension. It goes all the way from Paul Renaud Boulevard down to Highway DD into a roundabout that's scheduled. And I know everybody tells me that it's been approved, but I know Preston Woods is still fighting it, Shady Creek is fighting it, and we don't want it. These pictures were taken from a drone two years ago when they were fighting O'Fallon to oppose the extension. So there is a Springflood Creek that will get destroyed. There's Deer. This is where the ending of the roads going in, and I don't know if you can see the houses, but that house on the top, they're going to be looking at the road. And I know the road board said they were either going to actually have a bridge or make the road so it would be passable just by building it up with dirt and rock and whatever they do with the roads. This is how one of the proposals was, but I'm pretty sure that has changed, and it's closer to the house that's in West Lee. So I know that's changed a little, and that's where they've done all the boring to test the ground. And I'm pretty sure that even though they say they have all the paperwork completed, I know they don't have the 404 from the Army Corps yet. This half is the lower half that will be meeting Highway DD. And that's still the lower half, but it's the bottom half of Preston Woods. And all those dots and all that information is things that they found from the archaeological survey that they did. And they were thinking about putting it on the ethnic heritage list, which means darn it, they can't do anything with it at all. It's not needed, it's not wanted by any of the subdivisions, Preston Woods, Shady Creek, and Wesley.
Thank you, ma'am.
Arnie Deanoff, Agenda Items and State Audit.
Mr. Deanoff. I hear his voice out in the hall.
Nice to see you once again, members of the county council. My name is Arnie C. AC Deanoff, county public advocate running for United States Congress. First of all, I think it's a shame that the county council voted to defeat moving this to another venue or putting this issue of Double D off. I think it's a violation of Chapter 610. I think our Attorney General should be involved. I think the city fire marshal for the city of St. Charles, they've been called the fire department, and I believe they're on their way because we have definitely exceeded the posted amount of people, and there's definitely jeopardy of public safety here. And I'm kind of ashamed at the council's decision for that and transparency and openness of government. So what I want to talk about is the library board. Our library board is in grave problems. I talked about it at a last meeting, wanting to be appointed as a trustee by Mr. Elman. I've visited the state auditor and I've asked for an audit petition, which I ask each and every one of the people in this room to take throughout our county because our money is being wasted through fraud and being misused and misabused, especially by the president, Stacy Alvarez, who should not be reappointed to the Board of Trustees. And she's also the Director of Administration and Attorney at East-West Gateway Coordinating Council, the conduit for federal money. So that petition, hopefully they approve it with the language that I proposed. I talked about Judge Fegris, where he decided not to send somebody who killed three people and injured life-sustaining injuries, and I go over to the courts and I see the judge presiding today over a jury trial for medical malpractice with 17 attorneys. He doesn't deserve, when he sent a girl for killing three people, to jail for 90 days. That's shameful, irresponsible. There's an order of protection in another case filed against our deputy highway commissioner, our bridge engineer, which now has been sealed from the public view when he's a public official. And that's a shame. And that's Mr. Tormola, Nathan Tormola, who's a county employee and is very suspicious about what's going on and why they're being sealed. The letter from Roy O'Sullivan, our county councillor who lives in St. Louis City, who's in violation of the qualifications of the county councillor's office. I'm still waiting for the reports of our $125,000 Tom Dempsey lobbyist and our $125,000 lobbyist, Mr. Mike Gibbons. Again, under Chapter 610, Mr. O'Rourke, I'm speaking to you. I'd like you to turn over those documents. Why are we paying all this money? You don't want to be engaged and transparent with the public. You finally released the public salary of Communications Director Kevin Colleen for $136,000. Stop playing the political games. And finally, on Bill 5300, deny the rezoning for R1B, keep our scenic beauty, and let's stand with the citizens of St. Charles stand with the citizens of St. Charles County and the citizens of Missouri Highway D neighborhoods. Vote no. Thank you.
All right. That concludes the public comments section of the meeting. Is there an oral report from the County Executive?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I need to do, and most of you, I think, met him earlier, but want to introduce to the public Brian Ludwig, who is taking Bob Schnur's place as Assistant Director of Administration. Brian has lived in St. Charles County for 30 years. He previously was a police officer and attained the rank of Colonel in the St. Louis County Police Department. He's been very active in county government for the last, what, 15 years at least. He served on both of our committees that were appointed to recommend five candidates for us to consider for Police Chief. He served on the first and the second, and he's been on our Merit Commission, I guess, for the last six, eight years. Yeah. So we were very impressed with his service and his participation, and actually, we've known him, working with him on other issues involving St. Louis County, and we're just very happy to have him with us and look forward to great things together.
All right. The next item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda and move up Bill number 5300, and go ahead and address that now while all the folks are here.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Okay, so now we will move up to the bill's final passage, which is Bill number 5300. And will you please read that?
Bill number 5300, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to R1D, R1B, and RR, single-family residential districts per application, RZ 24-03.
Okay. Questions, comments, starting out with Mr. Brazel.
Yeah, just want to run some numbers here. In 2000, from between 2021 and 2022, Winsville annexed 1,000, approximate numbers, they're like 980 acres and built 2,000 homes. O'Fallon into between 21 and 22 annexed 1,000 acres and built approximately 2,000 homes. So from 21 to current, it's an estimated approximate number of about 10,000 homes total and about 6,000 acres. So at the last meeting, I asked Mr. Weber, the attorney for the developer, I had asked him, I sent him an email, actually, and I asked him at the meeting as well, what's the plan for Phase 1 north of the creek? What's... How many units? We don't have a plan for Phase 1. Come on. I mean, you guys are doing this big investment past the first phase, and you don't know what the first phase is. You're doing the second phase. And so it's disingenuous and quite dishonest to say that you don't know what your Phase 1 is. And so this council is deliberating something on Phase, St. Charles County Phase, when we have no idea what the first phase is. Is it going to be, I just want to know how many units. I don't even need to see the plan. I sent an email to them last week, I got it this week, and they don't know the answer. So is that, is it 300 units? Is it 500 units? Are there apartments? Are there duplexes? What is it? So there's no way we have any idea on the load on DD, the load on the school districts, the load on the police department, the load on utilities. We have no idea. And this council's here going to make a decision based on no information? And so that's a big, that's a big problem. I don't know what all the other council members are talking. I don't call, I don't typically call and email without going to the public hearing. But the other thing is, is that we keep hearing that the, this is, this is a compromise. This is a compromise to the master plan. Why would we compromise? I mean, there were 30 people or so on that committee that put together the plan. I wasn't on that plan. I didn't draw those lines. But that's what the people's expectations are. Those are three-acre lots. That's what we want. We don't want anything other than three-acre lots. And the farther west you go, it's five-acre lots. And that's just the way it is, right? You know what's funny is, we all moved out here, most of us. I'm from Florissant, I've been out here 30 years. But I moved out here because of the way it is, because of how I love St. Charles County. And the same with all you folks. And then we have these elected officials, Winsville and O'Fallon, they keep annexing, aggressively annexing and building all these homes, and even some of us council members putting, allowing these kind of developments going in. And the fact is, we're ruining our county. We're making it the same way the counties and the areas we left. It doesn't make any sense. You guys notice how you drive around now and the traffic is just so bad? It's so bad. O'Fallon, Winsville, it's backed up. And so some of the council members, probably with good intentions, are fearful of if we don't, if we... Our annexation laws in the state of Missouri are screwed up. There's four counties in the state of Missouri, out of 114 counties that have lax annexation laws. It was changed years ago by one of our senators, I'm not really sure who did it, but maybe the reasons at that time were okay. But currently now that it allows aggressive annexations in four counties in the state of Missouri, and we're one of them, which the laws need to be changed, and we did have some drafted legislation to our senate, our state representatives, and they couldn't get it out of committee, which is total crap. You guys need to pressure our state representatives as well, our senators and our state reps, and say, get 0712 and 0714, get it back like it isn't on the other counties. It's a problem. But here we're dealing with this right now. And so it just doesn't make any sense for us to, we should make a motion to table this until we know what Phase 1 is going to be, because we have no idea. And you guys know my position on this. I told the developer, if you just put in the three-acre lots like what the zoning says, then let's make it work. And they've been, they've been talking to us, and they, like one of the gentlemen said, one of the problems is, well, the family wants $76,000 an acre, and that's just too much, and we can't make the numbers work. We do not zone based on the price of property. We zoned on, they should pay the price of property and what the zoning is. And that's the problem here. That's the disconnect. Terry, I don't want to take all the time, but I did want to, whenever other council members talk, but I didn't, he, Mr. Carnes, the attorney for Citizens for Smart Growth, I just wanted him, to ask him some questions. He's got three strong points, and briefly, but I want you, I don't want, you know.
Anyone else want to speak, or do we...
Joe, you mentioned, you mentioned all this aggressive annexation. So is aggressive annexation what's ruining the county, or is it the County Council ruining the county?
Well, no, I think that's a good point. What I'm going to say is, is we are, rightfully so, in some of the council's mind, they're afraid that if we turn this down, that O'Fallon will annex it. That's one of the hiccups.
Do you think that's a possibility, Joe?
I think that they have a really good case. That's why, that's why I'm willing to fight.
All right, but our county counselor, who sat in the meeting, does not share your opinion.
Well, why don't we ask his attorney that's an expert on annexations?
Our county councilor's sitting there, it's not sitting there, so, but we could certainly ask him questions.
Well, these, I mean, that's why there's attorneys, there's always varying opinions, but I mean, they feel like...
Sure, but why hasn't this happened in the past? I mean, this is a, it's a voluntary annexation, and if somebody wants to, it's contiguous, which I think that they can make it contiguous, they can annex.
Okay. Folks, allow counsel.
Well, Tim, here's the thing. That's why I wanted to ask him, because at the meeting they had, I wasn't invited to it for whatever reason, but I...
A lot of people weren't invited to it. I mean, I don't think, was Dave Hammond or Terry Hollander or Matt...
Well, there were council members invited. I would have went, but I wasn't invited. But they probably know my position, that's probably why. They already know. Can I ask Mr. Carnes to give him a couple minutes?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. Mr. Carnes, you want to come up here?
Give me several minutes, just quickly run through.
And just be specific and to the point, okay?
Good evening. I'm Tom Carnes, C-A-R-N-E-S. I'm an attorney for Citizens for Smart Growth in St. Charles County. They had me look at this, and I doubt that I'm telling you something that you don't already know. But last year, when Jeff Cole brought up proposed development for the entire tract of Tall Trees and Highlands, this county voted it down. And it just looks to us as if, okay, well, we'll divide and conquer. If we can't do it all in one bite, we'll do it in two bites. Because both the Tall Trees property, which is owned by one owner, Mrs. Sheerbaum, and the Highlands property, which is owned by Dearburg, are both eligible for voluntary annexation by O'Fallon under Missouri Statute 71014, which is how they proceed. And the citizens said, well, the commission, I don't know if this is true or not, they view this proposal for the Highlands as a dam against O'Fallon coming further down Highway DD. And it doesn't act that way at all. Nothing is going to stop O'Fallon, because especially, if Sheerbaum is going to sell to Lombardo, the Dearburgs are going to sell to Lombardo, both are single-owner properties, and they just have to go to the City of O'Fallon and say, we want to voluntarily be annexed. Well, they have to meet the requirements, and I, Mr. O'Sullivan and I spoke, and it is true, for O'Fallon to do anything, they have to pass an ordinance. And they have not passed an ordinance yet. So to the extent he says, well, it's speculation, it's because there is no actual ordinance to review at this point. But we look at the boundaries of the Tall Tree property, because that's what would be conveyed. And those boundaries don't meet the contiguous and compact requirement under the statute. They're not, the annexation is not reasonable and necessary. And frankly, 71.014 is probably another example of special legislation that's unconstitutional. It's the third iteration of that statute. The first two were declared unconstitutional, and the current version has not been challenged yet. But if the city moves to annex Tall Tree property without the other, it will encircle part of the county that will not be absorbed. And they can say, oh, well, we'll allow people there to vote, but it's something that will lead to litigation. It will not stop City of O'Fallon from moving down DD farther and farther. As long as Lombardo voluntarily consents to the annexation, none of these people are going to have a voice in what happens to it. And they will move for annexation before they sell individual lots, because then they'd have to go under 71.015 and have an election with the majority of city and the majority of the property owners in the development. They're not going to wait for that. So if you felt that it was proper to turn down this legislation last year when Mr. Cole was proposing it, there's no difference now. They're just doing it two steps instead of one, and it should be voted down.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I inquire, Mr. Carnes?
Sure.
Thank you for, thank you for making that point. It's not, it's, this annexation question isn't a question of O'Fallon reaching out and pulling people into their city. It's a question of property owners who may want to go voluntarily into O'Fallon and whether or not that's possible.
Not property owners, property owner.
Yeah, and if it's not possible now, could it be possible later on, certain other things happen? That's a very important distinction. And yeah, the annexation statutes, when it comes to cities annexing, have actually been strengthened in the last, in the last 25 years. And they can't go out and grab an area, bring it in unless the majority of the people in that area vote to come in. So in that sense, we are much better than we used to be. Remember, in the bad old days, if the city, the city, if the people in the area to be annexed didn't want to come in, the city could have a second election, and 2/3 of the people in the city could force them in.
Yes.
So, so we're right. The annexation laws are better now than they used to be. But they're the same as they always were when it comes to voluntary annexation. And what that means, aside from this proposal or whatever other proposal, is those people have a property right to do something with their land. And what we've got is a situation where we have this particular one, and we'll have more in the future. And the question will be, if people can't get anything more than three-acre lots from the county, they're going to go to the city. So we need three-acre lots, but we also need other farms, and we need to be competitive. And we need, I would assume we are going...
Folks, please, we've been very respectful for the 12 different people that spoke, including an extra person here, so let's share that same respect.
I'd bring a point.
We have, we have a competition, so to speak. We would like for people to come to us, because we think that we're more responsible, and we would do something that these people would like better than what O'Fallon would. If we say no to every developer that wants to do something out there, then they'll go to O'Fallon, or they'll go to Winsville, or they'll go, or they'll go somewhere else, because they... No, I don't know.
Well, there's two answers.
That's good. I believe you've made your point, and I...
Well, if there's two, just two answers. One...
No, I think, I think Mr. Carnes is very responsible. I don't understand why the audience wouldn't listen to what he's saying.
One is, you remarked that the developer would go somewhere else. The residents are saying, if you won't go for three acres, we want the developer to go somewhere else. Secondly, this planning and zoning by the commission is done under Chapter 64 of the statutes. And if this commission passes zoning under Chapter 64, O'Fallon can't change it. If you say on the northern Tall Tree property, that area of unincorporated county, you demand three-acre lots, even if O'Fallon annexes, they still have to keep three-acre lots, because the zoning was done under Chapter 64, and O'Fallon can't overrule the county's zoning under Chapter 64.
Thank you, sir.
You're telling me that when they annex property, they have to live with a zoning that exists there now?
If the county mandates certain lot sizes, certain street width, certain things like that, under Chapter 64, the city cannot override that. The county's zoning stands. The statute is 64.130, if you want to look it up.
Okay.
And that's never been challenged, as far as I've heard.
All right. Again, these are legal opinions that are probably...
I hope, I hope you're right, but that's not, that's not the law.
All right. We, we will now, any other council members that would like to...
Yeah. Mr. Baker?
Yeah, so, I mean, going back to your scenario, the property owner could subdivide an acre, make that contiguous, and then keep going south. There's other ways for this developer to annex, and if we said go somewhere else, I think we know where that somewhere else is. It's the City of O'Fallon. And if you guys are all concerned about high-density growth, look at Caledonia, and do you want that down in this area? I don't think you do. And this, this will open that hole. Look at the piece of ground next to Brummel Sick Park. What will happen if this property becomes the City of O'Fallon? And that's a rhetorical question, because I think we all know. So that's my comment.
All right, I believe...
Mr. Chairman, I call the question.
Okay.
I was just going to make a motion, if anybody want to entertain it, to table this, because I think it's important that we know how many units are going in Phase 1, so we can make an educated decision.
They may never bring Phase 1 to us. I mean, they don't, they're not required to bring...
But it's one project. Let's be realistic.
Mr. Brazel would...
I do believe we have a called question.
Yes. All right. At this point, I believe there's no more discussion, okay? Mr. Brazel, I know you made the motion, I don't think you got a second on tabling it. So we will move on from there, beginning with calling, calling the roll.
Bill number 5300, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to R1D, R1B, and RR, single-family residential districts per application, RZ 24-03.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
No.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
No.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
With the, the vote, the vote was five to two, because of the remonstrance, and the five votes was needed to pass. It did receive the five votes, so this particular bill number 5300 has passed.
Listen to your people. They don't want us to help.
We will, we will, we will allow a, a brief time before we pick up the meeting.
It's just that easy to disrupt our lives. We come here for help, and you all-
Shame on us.
Shame on you. Come on, get to the court. How dare you treat us like this? My God. We don't mean anything. We've been here for 30-something years, and we don't mean anything?
I don't pay him enough.
Take some more money from them.
Elam, look at, look at everybody. Don't look that way.
Son of a bitches.
This is bad, bad, bad.
Every damn one of you are worthless.
I can't believe you do that to us.
Criminal.
And it don't matter to you. We are suffering.
You can see it on your face, something up there.
I ain't got no faces. How dare you all?
Enjoy your money.
He knows better. He took over Joe's place without anybody knowing about it.
We turn to heat us.
How dare you all? This is bad, bad, bad.
Good job, buddy.
Always give yours up.
You're smart.
You're a-
No, I'm not.
You guys are horrible. I don't even think God can help you with this. How dare you treat us like this?
Yeah, Lombardo did really good on Facebook.
How dare you, God? Jesus Christ, I can't believe you did that to us. People that voted to end, you treat like this? And you don't even care? You can't even look at us? You have destroyed everything that we have built up, and you don't even care? Well, you are horrible, horrible people. God is going to get all of you, except for the ones that voted no.
Such a brat.
Yeah.
Shame.
Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Good job, guys.
I'd like to remove the election authority equipment.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, okay. So the election authority has been pulled. Anything else?
I'd like to remove the highway and the no parking installation.
Okay, I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. So we've removed two items from the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will come back to the first thing, which is the election authority. Mr. Brazel?
I would like, I would like, hope that the council can give me some, till next meeting, I would like to send you guys some information on No Ink. There's been a lot of conversation about this, this company, a lot of problems. There's a lot of places in other states in our state that are removing this from their election authority. And I would hope that we could, you guys would want to see some information, and then you'd make it, we could make a decision from there. That's, that's all I'm asking.
Do you, I mean, do you, do you have questions, Mr. Barr? I know he was here earlier.
No, I apologize. I was so wrapped up with all this other stuff going on, I didn't notice it. I apologize, I didn't. I would have known, I should have known, but I didn't. I would have sent information off on this, but you guys do what you-
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk over your-
Go ahead.
I was just wondering if delaying this would have any effect upon the elections that are already scheduled, so.
Is Mr. Barr still, he was, he was here. There he is, right.
And as he's coming up-
I did talk to Mr. Barr earlier about this. This is an addition about one pull pad per polling location to deal with the influx of people who will be voting, so we have a more smooth system going through. And I do believe that's why you're asking for the additional pads.
Exactly. We have 105 polling locations. I'm looking to purchase another 100 pull pads. I mean, the studies have been clear that the number one way to reduce lines at polling locations is to have a number of check-in stations. We knew that through two different ways, having more polling locations, or having more election workers at each polling location to, to process the voters. You know, in 2020, a third of the voters who voted, voted by absentee, either in person at my office or by mail. And we're not going to see that type of absentee voting in this election, because there's no pandemic. And so those people will be at the polls. And so we're trying to make sure that we have the ability to, that, you know, voters have a reasonable line and not unnecessarily long line. And so that's what we're seeking to, to do.
Okay, I want to ask him about the question that you-
Yeah, so the question I had, Kurt, was whether if we delayed this, as has been requested by one of the council members, would this have an adverse effect upon the election cycle that's coming up?
So I'm seeking to purchase these now for the November election. We're not planning on using these for the August election. And so if the delay is short, then there is no problem. If the delay is too long, that I can't actually get them acquired and, you know, in my possession for the November election, then that obviously would become a problem. So it depends on how long of a delay we're discussing.
If it was just continued to the next meeting, that would not have an adverse effect?
Other than my inability to attend the next meeting, no other adverse effect.
Mr. Elam?
So, question. So it sounds like Mr. Brazel has an issue with No Ink.
Okay.
Does they have to be bought from this vendor, or, like, why do they have to be from this particular vendor?
So the iPads themselves do not necessarily have to be purchased through No Ink. However, No Ink has the contract with St. Charles County to provide the software that runs the check-in system. And I can't use another vendor. It's, it, we either use No Ink, or we go to the, the old green books where everything's printed out on paper. And so I need No Ink to put on their software, and then to have their license that we can use that software. And then the iPads have to have their proprietary stand and everything else, all the accretments. It's just simpler to purchase the iPads through No Ink, and since Apple has a very strong price controls on their iPads, it really doesn't matter whether we purchase them through Verizon, which we have in the past, or No Ink, which we have in the past.
But you're still going to put this software on it once you-
It will still be using the No Ink software, and the No Ink licensing fees, and No Ink other items, the stands and such. So, yeah, it's, it's just, it's easier to just purchase everything through No Ink in one purchase order instead of doing two purchase orders.
So if we didn't use No Ink, we would have to go to paper?
Well, if we didn't, if, if we didn't buy these extra 100 iPads, I would simply use the iPads that we have, and the lines could potentially be longer. And so it's either do this to try to make sure that the lines are shorter in November, or don't do this, and, you know, we're likely to have longer lines in November. That's the trade-off.
Okay, we have a motion.
Kurt, on the problem we had in Augusta, with the, the election judges voting absentee, and then all the, all, when they were, you know the story.
When, when election judges intentionally broke the law to quote-unquote test the system, yes. I'm, I'm well aware of that.
And you're, we're not going to ever agree on this. I'm just asking you a question.
Well, no, they, they in fact did break the law.
Was this a program that was malfunctioning, that was showing them that they did not vote when they all voted, all six of them? It showed that they did not vote, so they called your office five times, and you want to call them back until the end of the election? So we didn't know if this was going on in other places? And then you tried to have them arrested for doing their job? Is that what you're talking about, that incident?
What malfunction was election judges choosing to violate their training and violating statutes?
Is it, was it that program? That's the question. Was it that No Ink program? Was it that program?
We have used No Ink for our voter check-in since 2013.
I think there's needs to be, you guys do what you want, but I want support to bet on any money on No Ink for the problems it's had.
All right, now, let's go back. We, we have a motion. Do I have a second to table this for two weeks, until Mr. Brazel can provide us some information on-
I'll second, just since we talked about consent agenda items and being able to pull them off, so.
So I have a motion and a second to table this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I believe we have a five to two vote, and this will be tabled, and we will take it up in two weeks.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate that.
All right.
Highway.
Highway, yes.
John, before you leave.
Come on up, John.
So we, we changed the process around a little bit on these type of things, where we used to wait after we did the public hearing, and then we vote like the next meeting or so. So on this one, we're going to vote now on this, because it's on the consent agenda, right?
Correct.
So I'm trying to understand, there seems to be an issue about how wide the lanes are for, gentleman over here was saying it's that wide everywhere else, so it's not any What makes this area to where the highway department says, yeah, let's go ahead and make that no, no parking? And is it no parking on one side of the street, or no parking on both sides of the street?
Just one side.
Just one side, okay.
So he's not wrong. There's lots of areas that have streets that narrow, that people could potentially park on both sides of the street. Difference is, basically, no one has petitioned to have any of those areas changed. When we get a petition, we'll look at it, we'll review it. In this case, with 25 or 26 feet wide, you know, if, if people have their tires all the way up against the curb on both sides of the street, you're going to have about 10 feet left in the middle, which some emergency vehicles are getting pretty close to 10 feet wide.
Right.
Definitely can be a tight fit. I'm not going to say they can't get through, but if anyone's not completely up against the curb, it's feasible that they might not be able to. There are cul-de-sacs at the back of this, there's no other entrance going in, so, I mean, from a public safety standpoint, I think having no parking on one side of the street does improve it. Is it a 100% chance that it's always going to need it? No. But again, all we did as our review is reviewed the circumstances. We see that, yes, there is potential for a problem. We know the residents, at least 38 of them in that area, would like to see it. That's far above the number that we normally need to, to look at a situation like this, so, you know, we're, we're okay with moving forward with a no parking in this area. Plus, the, the homes directly affected by the no parking, the ones that will actually lose their parking spots. I believe three of the four were part of the petition. So they agreed to lose the parking in front of their houses.
Okay.
All right.
With that-
Yes, Mr. Swans.
I used to live on Highgate and, right, Highgate and Fleet, so I know this subdivision. Do you know the width of Ipswich going in, off the top of your head?
It's in the 30s, I believe.
Okay, and then all the other secondary streets going across from Ipswich towards 70, Highgate being the first one, all the way down through Fleet, leading all the way over St. Andrews, what's the width of those?
I don't know off the top of my head. I haven't, I haven't looked at them.
So if you're going to do it for this one, what I'm afraid of is setting a precedent. Because when I used to have to back out of my nice little carport, single car driveway, and my wonderful neighbors behind me with the Corvettes that were vintage, sometimes I had to drive through my own grass to pull in and pull out. But if we're going to do it for this area, we open up all the St. Charles hills for the same thing. And everybody off Fleet who comes down, because we know people fly down Ipswich, where my people are still here who know this area, and then they come in on Fleet, they go over to Albans, they do all the side streets. Are we going to now make those no parking? Because I know how many people live over there who have multiple vehicles, and we do a lot of in-yard parking.
Yeah, I mean, again, you're going to have to look at each situation differently. I mean, obviously, the ones where there's no secondary access, it's, it's a problem. You know, we look at it from just the public safety standpoint. Is public safety improved by having no parking? It allows two-way traffic, it makes it easier for emergency vehicles to get in. It's not saying that it's, you know, this has to happen, or this, or, you know, no one can get through. It's just simply, we are supportive of the request.
Completely understand, but that subdivision has been there since, what, 1960s, maybe even a little bit before that?
Right.
Oh, it wasn't in the 80s? I remember when. Oh, 50s, yes. Have we had anybody ever petition us to do no parking in that area since you've been in charge?
Since I, well, I've only been in charge a couple of years, so, no, this is the first one.
And when this new subdivision came in, I know a lot of us residents were really upset because they were cutting through our subdivision to build, sorry, I'm going to say it this way, nice houses, because we were living in the rough houses. And to me, it's a have and have-not scenario here.
Understood.
John, oh, John, is there any other areas in this subdivision where they have no parking?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Only on the very front part, where you're up against the high school, there's no parking along that street.
I would just say, I would question back to what Matt's saying. I, I don't, how fair is that to take parking privileges away for people who live there? And it probably decreases their value of their home as well, so I just don't think that's, I think it's a slippery slope.
Set the precedent.
All right. We do have a, a motion. We'll need a motion to accept this particular highway department recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to pass the highway situation. Those all, those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Opposed? Opposed.
Okay, I believe it's five to two, and it passes. All right, so the highway, the yield signs and the no parking signs has been, have been passed. Okay, we move back to bills for final passage with bill number 5301.
Bill number 5301, an ordinance amending the 2024 budget adopted in ordinance 23-104 by appropriating revenues in excess of those estimated in the 2024 budget of the Capital Projects Fund in the amount of $1,300,000 for the St. Charles County Police Department Firearms Range Improvements Project.
Okay, questions or comments on 5301? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance amending the 2024 budget adopted in ordinance 23-104 by appropriating revenues in excess of those estimated in the 2024 budget of the Capital Projects Fund in the amount of $1,300,000 for the St. Charles County Police Department Firearms Range Improvements Project.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, bill number 5301 passes. Now we move to bills for introduction, and there's only one of those, bill number 5302.
Bill number 5302, requested by Joe Brazel, Dave Hammond, and Tim Baker, sponsored by Joe Brazel, Dave Hammond, and Tim Baker, an ordinance amending Chapter 500 and Chapter 505 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri.
Okay, questions or comments?
Terry, on this particular ordinance, this thing was, it was originated in 2004, so it's 20 years old. We have been doing this for 20 years. That's what folks that don't understand, they're saying, oh, you can't believe you're doing it. We have been doing it. However, I called Mike, is Mike here? Or Rick, you're here for him? Yeah. So we had several meetings, and I, he was in Wyoming, he couldn't make it, Dave was there. And my idea was, is I wanted to repeal this entire thing, because I get more complaints on this than any one issue, one issue. Because the septic tank department, Rich can talk about this later, but I was feeling they were overloaded, not returning phone calls, not being consistent, asking for one septic tank to be engineered and one not to be engineered, and it was just, it was a disaster. And all, and the other thing is, the real estate community was complaining, because, like some people said, you've got people having business-to-business transactions,
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Bill number 5301 passes. Now we move to bills for introduction, and there's only one of those, bill number 5302.
Bill number 5302, requested by Joe Brazel, Dave Hammond, and Tim Baker, sponsored by Joe Brazel, Dave Hammond, and Tim Baker, in ordinance amending Chapter 500 and Chapter 505 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Terry, on this particular ordinance, this thing was, it was originated in 2004, so it's 20 years old. We have been doing this for 20 years. That's what folks that don't understand, they're saying, oh, you can't believe you're doing it. We have been doing it. However, I called Mike. Is Mike here? Or Rick, you're here for him? Yeah. So we had several meetings, and I, he was in Wyoming, he couldn't make it. Dave was there. And my idea was, is I wanted to repeal this entire thing, because I get more complaints on this than any one issue, one issue. Because the septic tank department, Rich can talk about this later, but I was feeling they were overloaded, not returning phone calls, not being consistent, asking for one septic tank to be engineered and one not to be engineered, and it was just, it was a disaster. And the other thing is, the real estate community was complaining because, like some people said, you've got people having business-to-business transactions, and the county government's getting involved. And I'm with mine. This is my, I did this ordinance. This was my ordinance in 2004. But I can tell you that back then, there were a lot more sewage plants than there are now, or treatment, maybe because this is what we're doing. I don't know. So they went and looked at this ordinance, because they thought, I go, is this a burden to the county? It's taken a lot of resources, because a lot of complaints, a lot of problems. And they did a little homework, and the first mic was like, maybe we should get rid of it. Maybe it's a burden. But I think Rick did some work on it, and you guys found out, there is like 160, I think that's right, 160 violations and something like that, where they are discharging directly into stranger, into fields. And that was the whole intent of it. But like every ordinance we do, there's always unintended consequences, always, and you can't foresee the future. But in this particular case, what I was trying to do is make it simpler. Why are we inspecting? The question would be, why are we inspecting someone's house? Shouldn't they, shouldn't they be by or be aware? Why are we involved in these inspections and so forth? So my true intent was to eliminate this ordinance, okay? Now, Matt has a lot of septic tanks, Tim probably has some up in his there. I think that the conversation is, is maybe we should table this and revisit this, because from what I understand, they took restrictions out. Isn't that, Dave? They reduced it so it's not as complicated. So this has been in place for 20 years. And so when you ask, well, they're making you do a drip system. Well, I brought that up at the meeting. I said, why would we have to do a drip system? Why can't it be a gravity system? And I believe the answer was, because it's state code. Is that correct? So, well, when you do that, so some of these things, I think, I know Matt and I, and maybe Dave, I would like to have a little more, like a work session, and maybe have a little more input from the citizens, because my original intent was to eliminate it. Is that a good plan? I don't know. I mean, we've got to understand the consequences, so maybe the consequences are too bad that we don't want to do that, but I still feel that this is somewhat of a burden. But I do appreciate the community development, because they did work on this thing, and Roy did draft something the way we requested. So it's the best we got now. It's better than what we have, just so everybody understands that, but it's complicated. I mean, maybe not for Dave, but it's complicated for guys who don't install septic tanks. And the other issue was, if, we have particular people in southwest St. Charles County that buy a 100 acres or 200-acre farm, and it's got maybe a couple houses on it, and they're just adding it to their farms out there. And what he was complaining about is, if you buy some farm and add it to your 200-acre farm, you have to fix the septic tank and well. And he goes, well, I don't want to do that. I don't even do anything with the house. So we did change that, where it gets a vacant status. We don't have to do a septic tank replacement. After keeping the house, and they're just not going to use it. So that's good. So there are things in here that we did improve on.
Okay.
Yeah. I received a call from Joe Cronin, and he was concerned about some of the things that Joe Brazel just brought up, so I want to take a longer look at it and see if there's some better language we can come up with.
Going to make a motion to table this particular-
So with that, I would like to have that tabled. I know I talked to Rory this afternoon, but our conversation was maybe 15 minutes going through all this, so I think we have three of us who'd like to table it. If the rest of the council would be okay.
Do I have a second? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have tabled bill number 5302. All right. Is there any bills to be removed from the table? Okay, seeing none, do we have any announcements or miscellaneous from anyone?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Hope?
Joe, you remember, I think, it may have, the discussion may have started 2004, but I don't think, I don't think it passed until 2007.
Oh, I, well-
Well, here's why, here's why I remember that.
Yeah, Mike-
Because you were at the tail end of your environmental period there.
Yeah, I know. It was my deal. I know that.
And I was, I think it was my first couple meetings.
Yeah.
And you all passed it, and I think it passed unanimously, and I signed it, and I had one of my conservative supporters call me and jump all over me and say, I thought you were a conservative. How come you're making more regulations?
I know. You get it from both ends, you know? I know, but that's why, I don't know, we should revisit it, but I don't know.
Definitely should revisit it.
Yeah, we will. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.